Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Alexander County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting, September 11th. Commissioner Larry Yoder will give the invocation and Commissioner Ronnie Reese will give our pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Our kind and most gracious that we'd come before you this evening. We'd ask that you'd be with those folks in New York to remember this day of 9/11, a day that I definitely will never forget. Be it those first responders, be it those personnel that lost loved ones, to the families that lost loved ones, be it those that are still sick and afflicted by this terrible tragedy that happened. Be with them and take care of them and look after them. Bring them peace to the families that lost the loved ones. Heal the ones that have been stricken by the illnesses that they received from going inside these buildings at the time. We'd ask you to be with all of our first responders, be with our leaders in both our state, federal, and local level and throughout the world. Help all these leaders that they've made the decisions that are wise for our communities, our countries, and the world. We ask all thy things in thy name. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a special recognition this evening. In foster care recruitment, Commissioner Josh Lael will be handling.
Brenda Price please come up? I personally don't know Ms. Brenda, but I have heard lots and lots of stories.
Oh, good, I'm sure.
Yes, ma'am. As many of you know, my wife and I have been foster parents in the past. And Brenda Price is a legend when it comes to caring for the children of Alexander County. And I have a brief statement I would like to read. Brenda Price and her husband, the late William Sonny Price, began their foster parent journey in the winter of 1982, only a few years after the modern-day foster care system was established. In the past few months, Brenda Price has achieved a milestone very few foster parents have ever achieved in the foster care world, as she has opened her home to 200 children during her tenure with Department of Social Services. The Price family has always been a staple for Alexander County in serving the children in a magnitude of ways. Brenda worked for the school system primarily as a school attendance officer. Within the school system, Brenda made connections with all the families she encountered struggling with truancy concerns. The connections she made at the school in working with children facing or faced with adult problems led her and her husband to begin their fostering journey. Mr. Sonny Price was well-known for time at T-Sports Shop, where he and Brenda were highly involved with athletics through the school system. Their time working with students and student athletes led them to the calling of being foster parents. The department has placed 200 children with the Price family. We know that there are countless families and children who were changed by knowing Brenda and her husband. One of Brenda's most notable contributions is her dedication and leadership of the Iris Louise Cox Scholarship Foundation, which attributes scholarship money to a local student in memorial of an amazing soul that was fostered and found her forever home with Brenda Price. The Price family has always served as model foster parents through the years, showcasing that if a child was placed with them for one day or one year, they were treated as their own. The true estimate of her passion for the 200 children is how many went on to be successful adults who, to this day, acclaim the impact she had on them during their time in her home. The county was eager to acknowledge Ms. Brenda Price for commitment, determination, and immeasurable heart that she has shared with these children and families of Alexander County. And Ms. Price, personally, as a former foster parent, and I thought back, we only had six children in our home over about 12 and a half-year period. And I am absolutely in awe of your service and your sacrifice that you have made for the betterment of the children of Alexander County. And with that, I would like to present you with a key to the county. I should have had this ready, I'm sorry. But the plaque reads, "The Alexander County Board of Commissioners hereby present this key to the county upon Brenda Price in appreciation of your many years of love, compassion, and selfless dedication to Alexander County's foster children, presented September 11th, 2023."
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
You're welcome to say anything you would like to say.
Well, thanks. I really appreciate everybody that have had a part in this. Thank God for all the years that he's been able to give me, and I'm gonna cry. It's been a pleasure serving Alexander County and all these kids. I've loved every moment of it, most of them. There's been a few times. We had, the first three years when we were foster parents, we mostly did emergency. And we would get kids in the middle of the night. We still do occasionally, or I do. And I told some of the younger ones that it's time for them to step up now and to take over this responsibility, that I'm retired. But I do take kids on respite and I do take kids on an emergency situation. We, the first three years that we were foster parents, we were on duty or on call, so to speak, all the time. Because at that time, that's what we were, we were paid a stipend to be on call. And we did take in 17 kids in the first three years that we were keeping foster kids. And I have, I've loved every moment of it. The Board of Education people have seen me cry. I'd come to work after a child had been there and had to leave, and thank goodness for I had all those people to help me, my friends, my family. And it's just been wonderful. And I thank you.
I can't help it, you know? But what I want to say is, you know, everybody talks about the foster kids that she took care of and the ones that she took in, but let me tell you, this lady also... Mr. Chairman, went to the North County Association of County Commissioners meeting. Johnny Carswell, County Commissioner from Burke County, was installed as the president. We had two really good speakers. One talked on the veterans in the United States and how many veterans were committing suicide and how many were losing. Because one of the problems that we have with our veterans is sometimes veterans don't go ask for help, and they use alternatives instead of coming out and asking for help. So it's very important, and you'll see a thing come out from NATO and also the North County Association in support of veterans, and there'll be some other things going on throughout the year that will be out there to try to assist the veterans and do everything we can do for them to make their life better. The other thing is, the new president, Johnny Carswell, has an initiative that's going to be going on throughout the year, and it's called "One More Chance." Many of you may not know, but Johnny Carswell lost his son to meth, and it's been on his mind and it worked on him pretty hard. And his whole thing is, why didn't I try one more time, one more time, one more time? And it's very, very important this is to him, and it's going to be for the association all the way across the state, to do something one more time. Of course, we started the thing, started last month, we approved what we're going to do with some of our money that we received from the settlement. It was a very good meeting, one of the best I've been to really in probably the last 10 years as far as educational for county commissioners, and was impressed with the new slate of officers we have. I think we're in good shape there. Saturday morning, I attended the DAR, Daughters of the American Revolution installation of officers. I thought I was going to an organizational meeting. And I get there, it is the installation, very well-attended. They started a chapter here in Alexander County, and that's another good thing that will happen in the descendants from the American Revolution and the things that they do to support the county. And that's all I have. Oh, excuse me. Our new county manager was at the meeting there also. We sat through one session, the gentleman had some really good things he talked about, but the county manager came down for Friday and Saturday, and we had had good meetings with the association.
Chairman, Mr. Fox and I attended the chief's meeting, fire chief's meeting this past month, and I'd just like to say I appreciate what they're doing and their hard work. They get the tax money, but they're also working hard, they get grant money for their proceeds to buy their equipment. A lot of it's matching grants, and they're helping the taxpayers tremendously in what they're doing with this grants they're receiving, and I'd just like to say thank you to them for the hard work they're doing.
Mr. Chairman, I have two brief things. I was, I met with our county manager at Bethlehem Park, where we, you know, have already put into motion making some upgrades and bringing that facility back to what it should be for the citizens of the county. And just wanted to, biggest thing I wanted to say, I appreciate Mr. Fox and his opinion in that we want to make sure when we do, when we do a project, you know, not just this one, but when we do a project like the renovations to Bethlehem Park, we want to make sure that we do it, we do it well and we do it correctly, and that we, that we look, you know, that we look not only at what does the Alexander County Recreation Department need, but what do the citizens, you know, what do the citizens of the county need, what will benefit, you know, what will benefit everyone? And, you know, what will, what changes will ride, and, you know, I guess will ride, you know, the test of time, and I just appreciate not looking at it as, hey, we're gonna throw a Band-Aid at it where we may have to deal with it again soon. So, then the other, Mr. Chairman, the other thing, I guess I'm fortunate, I was asked to be on the Parent Advisory Committee at Bethlehem Elementary, where I have two children attending this year. I guess I'm kind of an old hat at Bethlehem Elementary because I've had four go through Bethlehem Elementary. I have two there now, and I have one more that will be there in two years. But the parent advisory committees of each of all the schools in the county have been tasked with trying to help determine the best, trying to help determine the best way to make up for some federal funds that are not going to be there for the school system next year and beyond, basically some COVID funds, and then some other, some other financial constraints. And I just wanted to, and I just want to say to the school system, I appreciate the involvement of the parents in this process, you know, because it is public education and it is, you know, I think sometimes some people feel like, and I'm not saying this for myself per se, but some, I think sometimes people feel like they don't have, you know, that parents, children in the school system don't have a say about things, but I just wanted to say that I applaud the school system for, you know, looking for, asking basically the opinions and ideas of, I guess it would be approximately 70, 70 or so, parents, you know, throughout the county, representing each school.
Any other commissioner?
If not, I've got, I'm gonna bring up a couple of my own points real quick. The eastern part of the county, I have made a couple of comments to our county manager and also our Recreation Department Director, that we need to start taking a look at the parks and on that side of the county as well. And also look into preparing for future growth from Bleedover, from the Iredell County area over into Alexander County for residential purposes. So I'd just like to mention that tonight.
Well, Mr. Chairman, since we're mentioning things, the concert on the square was really good up there at the Alexander County Forest Park Saturday night. The Eagles were there. The tribute band was there, not the Eagles. But anyway, there's gonna be one more concert up there, and the young lady that's with that group is from Titlesville, she's a resident of Alexander County, and you need to make sure you come out here. She's done real good and worked real hard, and that concert will be coming up to last of September. So make sure you come out and see that. And the young lady, her last name is Davis, I can't think of her first name right now. Carol Davis. Sarah Davis. It's Bruce's daughter. That's all I know, is Bruce's daughter. But she does real, real good, but you all need to come out and support that. The tax dollars are there, that we paid for these concerts, and we'd really like for you to come out and enjoy them, enjoy the atmosphere, enjoy the park, and if you're brave enough, try the splash pad.
Moving along, adoption of agenda. We do have to make an addition to the agenda. From the Alexander County Public Health Department, we're adding in, under item number 21, Section B, we're adding an updated fee schedule in regards to a vaccine, I believe. Have a motion.
Make a motion to accept the adoption of agenda with the addition.
We do have an individual that signed up for public comment this evening. I've got a set of rules to read. Mr. Brown still here. If you would, go ahead and make your way up to the podium. And I did pass down to the board your packet of info that was delivered. The rules are, "Public comment period is intended to allow the Board of Commissioners an opportunity to listen to citizens' comments and concerns. It is not a time for the Board to discuss the issues or answer impromptu questions." Length of comment for the speaker is limited to three minutes, please select one spokesperson. Comments are to be directed to the Board as a whole and not to individual members. Citizens will be expected to be civil and courteous in their language, and limit comments to issues of public concern. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate county officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda." Mr. Brown, podium, yours.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners, and the county manager for giving us this time to express our concerns. I'm here representing the Rink Dam Lakefront Cove next to the Sandbar Restaurant Marina. And most of you know where that is, hopefully, and what's kind of taken place over the last year, is we've had an influx of high traffic since the marina's been added in. Okay, it's brought serious safety concerns to that cove. And so, basically, and a long story made short, our proposal is to have the no-wake buoys move from the front of the piers at the Sandbar Marina out to proposal of pictures that we have in our packet, out far enough to where we can get that narrowing effect of the cove, the boats coming in and out, to slow down before they all get so congested because we've already had multiple incidents that's happened over there where people have almost got hit by boats. And if we don't take a proactive stance on this, somebody's gonna get seriously hurt or killed. So that's the reason that we've put this together, and we've submitted it already to the commissioners several times through emails and also through the county manager also. So we're asking that you guys take a look at it, take a hard look at it, and it's for safety concerns mainly, it's nothing other than that. We want to make sure that our boaters and our swimmers, our kayakers, wakeboarders, everybody that uses the lake is safe in that environment with all the number of boats that's being pushed into that area coming into the new marina. If you do take a look at it, like you say, you'll see where the buoys are being pushed back to. And we have contacted the wildlife officer, I've talked to Amanda Nelson, and also had stopped the wildlife officers also. And, you know, basically, they've took a D-1 form, and that's what we're asking you guys to take the bull by the horn and take that D-1 form and submit it to the wildlife officer so they can bring it up during their December meeting, if approved, and have that done by the DNR. So that's our proposal. We hope that you will look at it, consider it, and, you know, do the right thing for the community. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
We do have County Manager Shane Fox going to give us an update on the Mitchell Gold Bob Williams scenario.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Wanted to give an update on a, obviously, a very unfortunate event that took place on August 26th. That Saturday, we all were made aware of the closure of Mitchell Gold Bob Williams and affected immediately over 500 individuals, the majority of which reside within this county, lost their jobs. As of August 31st, that following Thursday, those employees also lost their health insurance. And so tonight, I wanted to give you a quick update of what had transpired from that date to now, and then a few things coming up, especially tomorrow with the job fair, and share that information as well for anyone that may be listening or may be a part of this meeting that was not aware of some of the things that have taken place. So starting with August 26th, unfortunately, we all were made aware around the same time of the closure of Mitchell Gold Bob Williams and the 533 employees that were currently working there that were immediately affected. That following Tuesday, partnership with Western Piedmont Council of Government, NC Works, started on-site at CBCC across the street here, preparing and allowing for individuals that were affected to come in and sign up for unemployment claims. To date, over 220 individuals have signed up utilizing those resources for unemployment claims. We're unsure how many folks to date have found employment elsewhere. We do think a good chunk of those individuals that did not sign up are obviously looking or maybe have already found employment in other places, so we're optimistic within that. During the last couple of weeks, we've had visits not only from our state representation with Senator Settle, we've had meetings with representatives from Senator Tillis's office, and a call with Chairman Pennell and myself, with the governor himself, sharing their condolences and sharing potential help that could be out there as we go forward. We're using our resources with the COG and our resources with CBCC to hopefully utilize some of the federal money that's out through the Department of Labor. Unknown at this point whether or not that will come to fruition, but we're optimistic that there potentially is some grant money out there for additional retooling and retraining that could take place, utilizing, again, our partnership with CBCC and some of those trades that are being offered there through their programs currently. So we've been very optimistic throughout the last couple of weeks and very thankful for our partnerships. And again, I wanted to provide just a quick thank you to some of the folks that have been involved. I mentioned the COG, I mentioned NC Works and CBCC, yourselves included in that. Thank you for everything that you all have done the last couple of weeks, Senator Settle's office, Senator Tillis's office, Governor Cooper, our folks internally here with the EDC who have helped put on several events through the last couple of weeks, including the job fair tomorrow and assisting with that, also with our DSS and Health Department that have seen some increased numbers, not only in the Medicaid application portions, but we expect to see somewhat of our numbers increase because of the lack of health insurance. These individuals, unfortunately, that lost their jobs, like I said earlier, lost their health insurance on August 31st as well. Most of these individuals that did find employment or will find employment over the next few weeks or next few months, unfortunately, may still have, be without health insurance for a period of time because of the lapse of the program. So we do expect to see increased numbers on our Health Department side as well, and again, on DSS, and potentially there with some of the application processes that take place. Do want to share with you somewhat of a closing here. We do have our Alexander County Career and Resource Fair tomorrow, the 12th, from 12:00 to 4:00 at East Tethersville Baptist Church. We have over 40 employers already signed up to partake in this. We were able to obtain email addresses from about 450 of those 500 employees, and so we've been able to communicate with them directly and hope the majority of which have not found employment would come out tomorrow and partake in the employment fair. But this is not only for those individuals, but anyone else, obviously, that's listening and is out in the public, that may want to come and look for a different option or different options or employment that's out there. I had a chance to speak to a news station this weekend and shared with them. Unfortunately, the news that came out right in the midst of all this was that as of July, we had the tenth lowest unemployment rate in the state at 3.1%. We were number one in the Catawba Valley, so something definitely to be proud of as we hopefully find these individuals' employment as quickly as possible and put them back to work and continue that progress that was made.
Thank you, sir. I do want to make a comment to go along with the update. It was released that...
It was released that the Mitchell Gold Bob Williams, who's owned by the Stevenson Group, if I remember correctly, whatever LLC it is, they filed bankruptcy. And we do have a couple of two or three companies in Alexander County that is listed on that that provided goods or services to the Mitchell Gold Company. So I say that for the simple fact that it goes beyond the 500 or so employees, it goes further. We're not talking about small amounts in those bankruptcy proceedings for these companies that are located in our county. So those companies are going to have to weather losing that amount, not recruit that for the time being anyway, never, I would say, but, you know, hopefully, they can weather that storm because, you know, there's other Alexander County employees working at those companies, and that could affect their jobs as well, in my opinion. So I just want to mention that. All right, we've got a string of public hearings that we're getting ready to start here. So, public hearing number one will be the Historic Preservation Plan that will be delivered by Lee Sharp this evening. Do I have a motion to open public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we open public hearing pertaining to the Historic Preservation Plan.
Second.
All in favor? Podium, yours, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Pennell, Commissioners, Mr. Fox and staff. On behalf of the Alexander County Historic Preservation Commission, we request your consideration for approval of the Historic Preservation Plan, which has been included in your packet, a 74-page document, I think. And we recommend the Historic Preservation Plan also be incorporated in the updated Alexander County Comprehensive and Land Use Plans. Briefly, the proposed Historic Preservation Plan is a planning and management tool that assembles information about our historic resources to provide the necessary information to responsibly deal with the existing issues and also with future concerns. A preservation plan identifies and articulates the county's preservation goals, lets the current and future property owners know how the county intends to grow, helps eliminate confusion about the purpose of the local preservation ordinance, and educates the public about the county's history and heritage. There are numerous benefits of preserving our historic resources. Preservation helps promote sustainability by reuse of facilities and structures, reduces waste going to landfill because they are not demolished, preserves our natural resources, and establishes economic benefits by creating jobs and increasing property values in the historic districts. Do you all have any questions about the information that was in your packet? If not, then on behalf of the Commission, we respectfully request your approval of the Alexander County Historic Preservation Plan.
Any discussion or concerns from anyone in attendance this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question. I'd kind of glanced through it. It mentions the Courthouse Square Center Street. Is the Courthouse in the Historic Preservation also?
In the district.
Yeah, with the Courthouse building, would that be considered a historic building?
Connie, what is the detail there?
Yes. It's because you did the building.
Okay. I just had that question.
Okay. Other comments or questions?
No, sir.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to close public hearing?
Same move.
Second. All in favor? Does any of the Commissioners have a, want to bring forth a motion on this public hearing on the approval of the Historic Preservation Plan?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve as presented.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Raise your hand.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I realize that was my left hand. I had rotator cuff surgery four weeks ago, and my right arm doesn't go up right now. So please excuse me.
Next public hearing, rezoning 23-09 Josh Lael and Company. Do I have a motion to?
Mr. Chairman, before you open the public committee, I wish to recuse myself pertaining to this item in that Josh Lael and Company LLC is actually, I am the owner of that company.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the fact that Mr. Lael recused himself.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? That'll show in the minutes. Do I have a motion to open rezoning case 23-09 Josh Lael and Company?
Make a motion to open.
Make a motion we approve.
Public hearing?
Public hearing, yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Go ahead, Mr. Burgess.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So for the first rezoning you guys are hearing tonight, this is Josh Lael and Company. The Planning Board voted to send forth a favorable recommendation two months ago due to the tornado warning. We rescheduled this hearing to tonight. This is approximately six acres, and what the applicant is hoping to do is rezone to residential, single-family. This is another single-family district that just has different dimensional and density standards. So the use itself would not change from residential, however the dimensions and density standards would. As I said, Planning Commission voted to send forth a favorable recommendation. Staff concurs with that conclusion, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I was just looking here, you got one inquiry about it, and that's all?
Yes, one person, I think, who lives 265, maybe, called and said, "Why is that sign on my road?" And I said, "Because they're doing a rezoning." He was, "Okay, cool." And that was it.
Any questions or comments or information from the audience tonight? Anything from Commissioners?
It's a residential section.
Residential area, yeah.
So I don't have a problem with it.
If not, do I have a motion to close public hearing 23-09 Josh Lael and Company?
Make a motion we close it.
Second.
All in favor? Public hearing's closed, if you would. I think you're fine to, well, you're going to be up there a while, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion to approve? From any Commissioner?
Make a motion to approve rezoning request 23-09.
Second.
All in favor? Moving along, public hearing rezoning case 23-10 Chad and Talisha Logan. Do I have a motion to open public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor? Public hearing is now open, Mr. Burgess.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a rezoning along NC 90. The property is currently highway commercial. The applicants actually own the parcel at 6311 as well, where they, I think, were previously using it as a business, maybe currently using it as a business. However, they'd like to place their home next to that, which is why they're seeking to rezone that single parcel from highway commercial to RA 20. Planning Board, again, voted for a favorable recommendation to send to you guys. Staff concurs with that, and again, happy to answer any questions if you have any.
It appears that there's homes all around it.
Yes, sir.
And a railroad track right up against the rear. Anyone from the audience have questions or comments or concerns? Any Commissioner? Do I have a motion to close public hearing?
Same move.
Second.
All in favor? Do I have a motion to approve the rezoning case?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve rezoning case 23-10 for Chad and Talisha Logan.
Second.
All in favor? Next public hearing, do I have a motion to open for text amendment 23-02B, be delivered by Brian Burgess?
Mr. Chairman, I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a text amendment that you guys have heard before. Some of this was adopted, other parts were sent back to staff for edits. Those edits have been made and all discussed at the planning workshop that we did two months ago. What is still on the table here are the standards of general applicability and lighting. This would create lighting standards just for new commercial development. In technical terms, point light at your own property, please. We have already handled the special use permits and Planning and Zoning Commission parts of this, so this would go to temporary signs. It's no significant change, it just better defines what a temporary sign is, puts a 180-day cap on a sign for, within a year period, in order for it to remain temporary. Penalties, as we discussed at the planning workshop, would have a staggering effect or a tiered effect where after 30 days of $50 on violations, you would go up to $250. After an additional 30 days, you would go up to $500 per day for folks who do not abate violations that we find. And then finally, an adjusted nuisance ordinance, as included in the package, that is geared more towards nuisances rather than just solid waste, which is what we're using currently. Happy to answer any questions about the packet?
Any questions or concerns or comments from the audience? Commissioners? Do we have a motion to close public hearing?
Same move.
Second.
All in favor? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the text amendment 23-03.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? One more public hearing, and that'll be 5310 Rural Transportation Grant delivered. I missed it, didn't I?
I'm sorry, I'm not done yet.
Did I skip over the 23-02?
No. You did. 23-03.
I think, oh, Mr. Chairman, I think I made the motion on 23-02. I would like to amend that motion or, because I gave the wrong motion number. It was 2302, not 2303. Okay?
We'll reflect that. Should we go ahead and vote on that one? Let's vote on that again. So, all in favor of the 2302, that was first and second a motion on to approve it?
Yes.
All right, so public hearing, text amendment 23-03, given by Brian Burgess. Do I have a motion to open this hearing?
Move to open the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor? Carry on.
Promise, I'm almost done. This text amendment package would change the definition for personal docks, personal garages, and personal storage buildings. Right now, we have a lot of folks who are looking to put maybe a dock on land that they own. If they've got a parcel of land next to them, they want to put a garage on it. Right now, that's considered an accessory structure. This would allow them to put that there without having to build a principal structure first, so it simplifies the process for them. There is one item that staff would recommend that we strike from this amendment because of some information we just recently received, recreational vehicles part. Our chief building inspector, on working on a completely separate project, found a memo from the state fire marshal, office of the state fire marshal, that pretty explicitly bans us from doing what this would do. So it is my recommendation that we don't do illegal things. The next step would be to clarify what a drinking establishment is and clarify which zoning districts they're allowed in. As it stands right now, they're allowed in just about anywhere that an eating establishment is because that's the closest definition that our zoning ordinance has. This would clarify and separate that and explicitly allow them only in the B1, B2, and highway commercial districts. The next part would be clarification that change of use permits are required even if you're going into an existing structure. So hypothetically, if you've got a strip mall and you put a business in, you know, a slot that no one was using for a while, that still would need a zoning permit to make sure that that meets our zoning standards. We've had an issue with that. And then finally, is a brand-new subdivision ordinance that updates the one that we've been struggling with for a while. It was discussed in depth at the planning workshop, but I'm happy to answer any questions that may have arisen since then if you have any.
Let me make sure we understand correctly. Section 154-006, 154-140.2, recreation vehicles completely out.
Yes, sir.
Any questions, comments, concerns from anyone in attendance?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. I just would like to, I mean, just for informational purposes, I mean, no personal reasoning whatsoever, because I do not own a recreational vehicle. I can't even get my wife to consider, you know, a tent, let alone. But anyway, what was the fire, what was the discovery from the Fire Marshal's office that?
I can send you a copy of this if you'd like as well. I did bring it with me. So essentially, what it is, is the standards, they've got standards for what's classified as what. Unless it meets this RVIA standard, and Bill Rogers can tell you way better what that means than me, unless it meets the RVIA standard, it cannot be used as a permanent residence whatsoever. So the 180-day rule that we thought that we had, the ruling is basically, if you're just doing it on paper but not actually doing it, we can still get a slap on the wrist for that, for allowing it.
So I assume you're going to go back and revise the recreational vehicle?
Yeah, we're going to look into what our options are there. Yes, sir.
The motion to close.
Same move.
Second.
All in favor? Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I just need to ask one more question, so I'll be, make sure I understand.
Absolutely.
Section 154-006, 154-140.2, those are the two that are coming out.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure. Don't need to make two mistakes in the same nine, okay? Just want to make sure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the, what's the best way to say this? Text amendment 23-03 with the removal or strike-through of section 154.006 and 154.140.2 pertaining to recreational vehicles.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Thanks, sir. Next public hearing will be 5310 Rural Transportation Grant given by Thomas Mitchell. Do I have a motion to open public hearing?
Same move.
Second.
All in favor? Huddings.
Good evening, commissioners. This is in preparation of our 53-10 grant for fiscal year '25. And it's the same as always, it's for 65 and older transportation and disabled. The transportation goes through Greenway, and it's a 10% match. And you should have those figures in your packet. And I'll answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions, concerns, comments from the audience? And commissioner? The motion to close.
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the 53-10 rural transportation grant as presented.
Is there a second?
Sorry, I made the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? At this time, we're going to call on Aaron White, Town of Taylorsville interim manager, along with Chad Pennell, Alexander County Sheriff, in regards to school resource officer presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. Let me just say first off that we take safety as our top priority for our students and our residents in the community. And saying that, we've had an issue since November when the grant was received to fill SRO positions at all elementary schools. The sheriff's office was designated to the task of filling six of those, leaving the seventh Taylorsville Elementary for the Taylorsville Police Department. We have advertised and have been unsuccessful in filling that position. Our problem carried forward with the retirement of our chief, which Michael Millsaps, who was a school resource officer, has filled in his place as interim police chief, leaving us with a second opening at school resource officer. I'd been in contact with Sheriff Pennell and discussed our concerns and asked him if he would be willing, if the commissioners was willing, to form an agreement between us and the sheriff's office to cover these two positions on a three-year term to allow him the ability to hire from an outside source the officers to cover those positions, after which we can renegotiate the contract based on the situation of the police department and sheriff's department at that time. We do not ask that the county acquire any cost in these positions. The town will take any cost over the grant funding that is necessary. And those, in that funding, I know that the sheriff's department, their salaries and benefits are higher than the town's currently. So we will absorb that cost as well as we've worked out an amortization schedule for equipment for the officer as well as vehicle and equipment, looking at a cost of about $2,200 per year for officer equipment and $7,550 per year for vehicle equipment. If you've got any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Just have a question. The salary is that far? All the positions, or is that for one, the 69, 77?
That is each position.
Each one would be there? So I was just kind of reading through here. So we're going to be, that will be at the high school and early college?
That will be at the student success center and early college, which they split time with one SRO and then Taylorsville Elementary. The Taylorsville Police Department will handle the two SROs at the high school.
High school, y'all keep.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Good afternoon. So I've just got a couple of concerns that I want to tell you directly. First of all, I have those two positions filled now. The day you tell me, if you tell me now, I will have them there tomorrow. One, we have to hire from outside the county. One, I already have is a candidate at the office currently. My major concern that I've had, and I've had conversations with our county manager, and I appreciate his input and conversation with me over this, and Aaron as well, is what are we going to do with these two positions if we approve this? What's going to happen to them? I can't in good conscience just hire somebody and say in three years, I don't know where you're going to be at. Are you going to have a job, or what you're going to do? There's nothing, you can't have an interim or a I don't even know what you want to say, a deputy just that's going to work for three years and that's it. So that is the one major concern that I have. I've got to have some, you know, something that I can tell these people, because I'm bringing them from other places, that they're going to have a job in three years. You know, whether that's with the county or whatever that may be. I've got to be able to give them some kind of a surety. I don't in good conscience want to hire them, you know, without that. That's my number one. And number two is, I think all of us here, our major concern is the safety of our kids. Number one. I don't want to put this off one day more than what's necessary to make it happen. That's why I've done the work ahead of time and tried to make sure that I have it filled. And I do. Now, one I might have to hire again, but I've not signed off on that until after I get approval from you. The money thing, I'm glad we have a good county manager that can take care of that because he's got these figures in his head. But I'm satisfied, I'm good with everything else. I'm good with the agreement that I've read from our county attorney. I'm just ready to move forward. The day you tell me I can, I will have them in there the next day. Or if you say tonight, they'll be there in the morning. Have you got any questions for me?
Well, that's my concern also, Chad. Same thing. What's going to happen in three years? What's going to happen at the end of this year? Once the grant runs out, who's going to pick up the tab? And get me, I'm all about the safety of the kids, okay? I want to make sure everybody understands that. But where's the money going to come from? Is the town going to pick up all of that? Who's going to pick it up? What's going to happen to the time that you're out of school and those officers need to work? Is this just for the school year, or is this for the whole year? How's it working? I mean, this is some questions that I think everybody needs to understand because, you know, because you're going to have that lapse in there for the school year, you know? So.
Mr. White, do you mind to come up here with Chad, please?
So I can say this, and we've, myself and Aaron and the county manager have talked continuously about this. Aaron's been upfront the whole time that he's, they're willing to take care of that part. Now, I also have that concern because now I have, I've got eight school resource officers now. Six of those are under grants, which I know the school system is going to try to get that grant again. And if that continues, then, you know, this is under a moot point.
It's a moot point, I agree.
But if it does not, I agree with you. I think that is something that we need to plan towards and look towards what that's going to look like for us because this will go from our eight to now 10 school resource officers. And now, a lot of the equipment and things that, I'm just going to be honest. I went through and cleaned house everything that I could come up with to try to keep this as cost efficient as possible. Because I think that it's important that we, if we can do it and make it happen, that we do it. So I just want you to know, as far as like weapons and things like that, I'm pretty good. There's going to be very few little things that we're going to have to buy, you know, in this. So I've tried to try to keep that cost down as much as we can to try to make this go over the line, if we can make it go over the line.
I guess the other question I'd ask, you said you already had the weapons overlay. That's money the county's already spent, is that not correct?
Yes, that is, that is correct. Some of that was, some of that was done through drug fund money and others is done through just equipment processes and stuff that we've got county money in that, yes.
If I may add to that point, so even though we do have the equipment, we're still incorporating the cost of that equipment in this proposal. So we, there's a benefit of having it so we don't have to wait on it, obviously, especially with supply and issues with getting things. But we are incorporating the true cost of each item that's included in the attachment within the packet and then amortizing that like we normally would over a six-year period. That is included in this proposal.
Mr. Chairman, I think we, I don't think we have any alternative but to do this. As long as Chad's good with it. The town is in this county, and it comes back to the county's responsibility. So I think as long as Chad's good with it, we move forward.
I agree with protecting our kids at, you know, pretty much any and all costs, period. That's not in debate here, I do not believe at all. Mr. White did state that the town was going to cover any and all costs associated with it, so that part would be taken care of. In reference to our sheriff's statement a moment ago where he has concerns for the employees that come on board in good faith to serve and protect our kids here for three years, would there not be an opt-out clause in that contract at any given time saying that the town could stop that contract or terminate that contract on a moment's notice? So the reason I say that is, we could hire these individuals one month from now, send them home. That's a concern that I would have.
That is not what the town's looking for at all. We're looking for coverage. Now, in saying that, if, you know, two years down the road, Chief Millsaps or whoever's chief at that point is able to staff it and that position becomes vacant on the county side, we could take that position back over. And that way, you don't have the issue with hiring someone else for possibly that point six months. That would be the only way we would look at taking it back over is if there became that vacancy there in that clause or in that time period where it just made sense for the county and the town. We're not looking for anybody to be hired and then released in three years if it carries forward. Like I said, our main concern is just making sure that we get these positions covered, and right now, we've not been able to.
So if at the end of three years, if the town was in shape to take them back, you would take the same ones that have been there, probably, and just keep them working?
If they wanted to do that, yes, absolutely.
This is a recurring grant too, and that you have to file each year, or?
It's a two-year grant. This is the second year of that grant, and we will be applying as soon as it is made available.
So is this the first year that we've got this grant, or has it been going on? This is the second?
But we were able to expand to six, well, actually, we wrote it for seven because we wanted one in every elementary school. We were able to expand the grant, and we were awarded what we asked for.
So it ties in with that one that we approved? Okay, alright, thank you.
Yeah, to that point, this is the exact same grant that you all discussed last fall with regards to the other elementary schools.
I'm definitely not trying to be difficult, but it always comes back to the contract. What's agreed upon, what's signed off, duh-duh-duh. So let's say that the town is in, has the capacity, the resources necessary to take this back in one year's time. So if you take it back in one year's time, and these SRO officers were hired by the sheriff's office at that pay scale, and then they go back into the town, how does that affect them at that time? Do they get decreased to be in line with what the Taylorsville pay scale is, or is it something different?
That is what my major concern is because they're coming, no offense to the town, no offense to anybody else, but they're coming to work for the county. And they're expecting a job, the one, for sure, has been already with the county for a length of time. I don't think they're wanting to go somewhere else, they're wanting to stay with us. That's what my concern is. I'm not looking at, I'm just telling you straight out. I'm not looking at these people come here and then giving them back, you know, give them to the city. Now, if the city opened up and they moved voluntarily, that's completely different. But it's not, this is not a place that I would be comfortable with just saying, alright, town, you can now have these two officers, if that makes sense. That's what my major concern was, and it has been.
And if I may add, that's where we arrived at the discussion of doing a multi-year contract. So the contract that our attorney has put together as proposal is a three-year term, does not allow for the town to opt out within that three-year period. Is that, can I ask Ben to elaborate on that?
I tried to track the town's proposal as closely as I could over the weekend when I was drafting this agreement. It is a three-year term with 100% actual cost paid by the town, either through grant monies or otherwise, to reimburse the county for the cost of these two positions. I believe you're asking as to a termination clause to this agreement, and we can certainly discuss that. This contract was given to Chad and our town manager today. It will have to be approved. You're my client, so I have to get your approval before I share this contract with anyone else. So the town hasn't seen it, but I believe it's a pretty close draft of what their letter to the county considered, which is a three-year term, 100% cost, which are the two most important clauses. But we can certainly discuss in closed session any changes to my proposed agreement further, if you wish, today. And then come back into open session with any changes to present to the town. But as for a termination clause, these types of inter-local agreements between local governments are often at a 60-day notice at the discretion. But we can certainly discuss that in closed session. The rest of the terms and conditions that are outside of the town's proposals are pretty boilerplate as to indemnification and otherwise, just to be upfront with the town. But, and I had an email for the commissioners drafted this afternoon, and I'm not sure why it didn't go out, but I've printed out the copies so we can certainly discuss that later.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we discuss this issue during.
I've got one more thing.
Okay.
So the only other thing that I ask is, as soon as we, that I'm notified, as soon as we can get a decision, because I'm, like I said, I've got one that I'm just waiting on. I've got one that's sitting at the house right now that's ready for in the morning, if necessary. And I know I'm just speeding up, but I'm just being honest, it's my heart. If I can put somebody there, I want to do it as fast as I possibly can.
Let me ask this.
Yeah.
Can we not say that we can go ahead and authorize the sheriff on a preliminary or a short status or something to fill the vacancies for protection of the kids until we agree on the contractual?
What I would do, Mr. Chairman, is that let's go into What, what I would do, Mr. Chairman, is that let's go into closed session because it's contractual thing. We can go into co- uh, closed session under contract, under general statutes, discuss the contract. And if we agree to the contract and the way it's written, if we need to do any changes, we can come back out of closed session for the primary purpose of approving this contract. Well, I, hey, I'm the lightning babe. But that's the easiest way to do it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we, that we consider this item in closed session per gen- per NC general statute 143-318, point 11, A4, 5 and 6 pertaining to economic development contractual and personnel issues. And that we, upon a decision.
Potentially.
Upon a potential decision, come back into open session after closed session to approve and/or make any
Changes.
You know, make any or to, to, to potentially take action, excuse me, to potentially take action on this item.
I'll go with that. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Next item of business will be reschedule October meeting given by County Manager Shane Fox.
Come up to the podium, I've got a couple items coming up. The first one, um, is a proposal to reschedule October meeting to October the 16th. I will be out of town that first week in October attending the ICMA conference, which is an annual conference, international conference or manager association. So I'll be out of town and the following week we have conflicts. So our proposal is to move the October meeting to October the 16th.
Sir, mayor, check your schedule, you good?
I'm good. I keep my money's open.
Alright, we got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Even though it's my daughter's birthday.
Ooh.
And she's the mean one too.
Given by County Manager Budget Ordnance Amendments Number 1, 3, 3 through 6.
I'll come before you tonight to present our first budget amendments of the year. So, um, we made it a good run for a few months, but we are here tonight to present 1, 3, 4, 5 and 6. Number 2 is cons- is a part of your consent agenda, which is an adjustment to capture the interest earned within our opioid settlement money. So that's a positive number 2, but it's number 2 within the consent agenda nonetheless. So number 1 is a amendment of $3,236. This is new detention money through a federal grant that we received, so this is a positive adjustment. The number 3, again skipping number 2, that is in the consent agenda as part of the opioid money, is the sheriff is asking to utilize $30,976 of drug money. Number 4 is $42,750 in additional revenue through the Health Department. So that's an additional grant through the Special Supplemental Nutrition Program or WIC. And then to increase the Health Department budget for the American Rescue Plan Act. Again, these are additional revenue monies coming in to be expended, that's $42,750. The 5th is again $44,091 of additional money coming in through our DSS department. This is to increase DSS budget for additional state allocation funding for one-time crisis intervention program or low iner- income energy assistance, the LEAP program. And then number 6 is simply moving $115,396 of our state lottery money over to the school capital improvement funds for renovations and repairs to be done at Hidden Knight Elementary School, Bethlehem Elementary School, East Alexander Middle School and carpet replacement at Alexander Central High School. So I did, unfortunately, um, we didn't unfortunately, or fortunately made it several months without budget amendments. At this time last year, I think we were on number 14 or 15. So we are, we are doing better, but we do have some to present to you tonight. Good news is four of those five are increased monies coming in because of additional grant money.
And Mr. Manager, based on what I read here, I don't believe any of this comes out of tax dollars. It's all grants.
That's correct.
All lottery fund money.
That's correct.
So Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve budget item number 1, number 3, number 4, number 5 and number 6. And none of those will cost the county any money coming out of tax dollars, they're budgeted money from grants.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Next item of business will be Board Committee Appointments given by Jamie Starnes, Clark to the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we need to reappoint Judy Kaywood to the Alexander County ABC Board for three years. Appoint Shane Fox and David Moose as an alternate to the Western Piedmont Regional Transit Authority Board. Appoint Dr. Jonathan Goodnight, Dr. Robbie Sheffield and Lauren Kaziah for two years to the Consolidated Human Services Advisory Committee. Reappoint Angela Johnson for two years to the Region E Aging Advisory Committee. Reappoint Dale Fox to the Jury Commission for two years. And then the Animal Control Advisory Board, appoint Shakira Ballin for two years. And reappoint Dr. Hannah Schaefer, Billy Walker, Jason Moore, Mike Deal, Garrett Davis and Maggie Dollstrom for two years.
Your servants question or do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the appoint, to approve all the appointees that have been presented.
Second.
All in favor? You've had a chance to look over the consent agenda. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda as given in our be- in our packet.
Second. All in favor? County Manager's Report given by Shane Fox.
I'll come back up here to share a few things. I wanted to come to the podium to share a plaque, first of all. This is from the State of North Carolina Division of Motor Vehicles. Commissioner's recognition is hereby presented to the Tethersville's, Tethersville License Plate Agency. This was signed by Wayne Goodwin, Commissioner of Motor Vehicles, on the 14th day of August 2023. So we received this and we will place this in our license plate agency office on proud display. This was because, and if you recall, the emails that were shared back and forth, recognition from an individual that came from a neighboring county that had received unfortunate service at several locations in trying to resolve a pretty major problem that she was dealing with. We were able to help her, not only able to help her, but help her very efficiently within minutes. And that email made its way through our state senator, Senator Settle, and made its way up to Commissioner Goodwin, who then presented us with a plaque on the 14th. And so we did not have this in time, obviously for last month's meeting and the cancellation of that, but wanted to present this tonight or show this tonight for public recognition of the wonderful customer service that has taken place downtown in Tethersville here at our license plate agency. So I'll be more than happy to keep that and let you look at it. Also wanted to share some really good news, we're able to receive some great news this past week. The CAB grant, that is through the North County Department of Information Technology Division of Broadband and Digital Equity. We were able to receive a grant to expand broadband to approximately 152 additional households with partnership with Spectrum. Spectrum was the applicant, the applicant for the grant. The grant was awarded at $919,437.35. So $919,000. The county's match for that grant is $1. So I want to make sure that I say that again. So we were able to utilize $1, truly just $1, in ARPA funds to receive a $919,000 grant that will bring high-speed internet broadband services to 152 households through a partnership with Spectrum. So I was able to include, and I think you have included, a copy of the map of those locations. We will have a press release that I have right here that will hit the wire tomorrow that will give indications of the areas that will be included. We did include a number of those roads and the individual houses within those roads that will be affected by that. And we do have that information for anyone that reads this and would like to inquire even further whether or not they will be eligible. So we're hoping to see that progress as we go into 23, into 23 and into 24. But then wanted just, again, make sure that I say that we were able to receive a $919,000 grant with a $1 match. That's not something that you're able to do every day. So we're able to utilize and leverage those tax dollars very efficiently, I would say so. We are in the stages of our courthouse programming. We've been able to have several meetings over the past couple of months with looking at our current space and what needs that we have now and what needs we will have into the future. And we do have a meeting coming up later this week with courthouse committee to discuss the outcome of the programming meetings and what that square footage may look like and, and what those proposals will entail. Again, this is just the initial phase. You all in the county has not committed anything beyond this phase at this point. So our initial phase is to be able to see, one, what we have currently, two, what we believe that we will need. And then three, hopefully be able to put some numbers to that and see where we go from there. So our next phase after understanding what our needs are from a space standpoint is to start discussions of what that looks like going forward from a cost and from a feasibility standpoint. I was going to mention earlier, Commissioner Yoder and I were able to attend the County Commissioners Association Meeting in Raleigh on the 24th, 25th and 26th. I do have the privilege on October 1st, 2nd and 3rd of attending the ICMA conference, in which I am a member and will receive certification this year, so I'm excited about that. That's coming up here in just a few weeks. Thank you for your participation on the August 8th planning retreat. Mr. Burgess mentioned that earlier. For those that may not be aware in the public, you were all willing to come that Tuesday morning and participate in a several-hour discussion, open to the public and all things planning is on your related. And I'm very appreciative of your time and your commitment and your investment into that time. And your feedback was extremely important in what was presented tonight. And then one more update to provide, the port program that was approved in July, we were able to fill that position last week with Shannon Childers, who has been with us for seven years. So he has taken that position and should be filling that role within the next couple of weeks. So we're hoping to see some action pretty quickly from that position and from someone that's been within the county for seven years, vested with the county and understands the county. So we're very appreciative of his willingness to step up into that role and we hope to see some dividends paid very quickly. Be glad to answer any questions you have on anything I spoke on or anything county-related. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to continue right into our Consolidated Human Services Board meeting. Did anyone sign up for public comment? Public health report be given by Billy Walker, Health Director.
Good evening. I'm going to present just some updates, what's going on in the Health Department. And then Emily Vick's going to come and do the
Pull that microphone down.
Communical Disease Report. These are the updates that I'm going to give, organizational updates, financial updates and then situational reports. Our current vacancies, we are happy to announce that we are fully staffed, all but the environmental health specialist position. And a staffing update, I'd like to congratulate Mallory Chapman. She completed the Certificate of Epidemiology Program through UNC Chapel Hill. And it's a big honor because only eight people were, across the state, were actually allowed to take this. What they had to apply and she was chosen. And this was paid through ARPA funds. And it was because during COVID, they saw the need for statistical data analysis. And so a lot of the bigger counties, they already have an epidemiologist or access to epidemiologists and we do not. And some of the smaller counties can't afford that. So this will put a certified epidemiology person in our county, which is great. One thing about Mallory is she is a fairly new graduate and it's, it's great for individuals, young individuals to come and work for county government. And so we're excited and she has added a lot to, to the Health Department already. And she actually volunteered during COVID. She was in the public health, she was attaining her public health degree. And so she actually volunteered, she is from Alexander County and was having a hard time getting hours for her degree. And so we needed people to help us with surveillance. And so Mallory came on then and volunteered and then she actually did an intern with us as well. I'm just going to touch briefly on financial updates. The amendment number 4, Mr. Fox just discussed, but this is, this is what that, that increase was for. And the WIC numbers was because our breastfeeding numbers were up so high. The situational reports that I'm going to discuss, I'm going to just touch on the annual orientation training for our advisory board, renovations and then what's coming. And then, like I said, Emily's going to come up and, and discuss the communicable disease report. On August the 21st, we, we conducted our annual, I mean, our new advisory board members went through orientation. And then those who were continuing to be on our board had their annual training. The covered entrance, we are having plans drawn up for, for this for the main building. And it's also paid for the COVID dollars. This is going to help us protect the clients from weather while they're waiting to be seen. Some health education outreach that we're doing, Back to Bat, Back to School Bash, the Hidden Knight Celebration, the Senior Center Health Fair, the Apple Festival, National Night Out and the County Wellness Fair. We're attending all those events. And then we, we definitely are working hard with the Substance Use Committee. And we have taught Catch My Breath to nine of the PE teachers in the county. And then of course the port team as well will be working with, with that. Any questions about what I've discussed so far?
Alright, so I'm going to go over the communicable, communicable disease report for the calendar year of 2022. Just a quick definition of communicable disease. It's illnesses that spread from one person to another or from animal to person could be spread through direct contact with a sick person, breathing in airborne viruses and bacteria or contact with blood and other body fluids. The Health Department is responsible for investigating the circumstances of these diseases, determining if control measures are needed, determining if there are outbreaks. And we report those through the statewide system called NC Ads. Prevention is hopefully our first and main role with communicable disease and it's one of the most important functions of public health. Early detection and investigation of communicable diseases aids in determining the source and spread of illnesses and hopefully helps us prevent future illnesses. Quarantine and isolation, basically isolation is the people who are already sick and when we restrict them from going anywhere, we saw this a lot with COVID. And then quarantine is for people who could have been exposed but are not sick at the time. This is our 2022 look at our communicable diseases that we had. I'll let you just look at the numbers. The, beside of them, we have some of them in red, meaning our numbers went down. Like gonorrhea went down like 13 points and our hepatitis A went down 11. Those were some of our most drastic changes, so there were, there were, there were good changes. COVID-19 remained our most prevalent communicable disease in 2022. Chlamydia and gonorrhea cases also decreased from 2021. And like I talked about, our hepatitis A cases also went down. And then there were three fewer syphilis cases in '22 than from the previous year. Of the 66 reportable communicable, communicable diseases in North Carolina, chlamydia and gonorrhea remained the most prevalent in Alexander County with salmonella being the most reported foodborne illness. foodborne illness. What are we doing, trying to educate? We're doing lots of education in schools with our STDs, social media outlets, we have a Facebook page, and we have our Health Department website in our clinics, and then at community events like Billy was talking about. On May eleventh, the end of the COVID-19 Public Health Emergency was put into place. We no longer have to investigate COVID cases. Doctors are no longer required to report them to us, but we do still investigate if there's outbreaks in like jails, long-term care facilities, we do still investigate Monkeypox, the first case was identified in June of 2022. We had no cases in Alexander County. We do have the capability to test at the Health Department if indicated, and we can get vaccine if needed, or we can send them to the Catawba County Health Department. They still have vaccine. Just a quick update about a couple of our vaccines. Flu vaccine is recommended for everyone six months of age and older, every flu season. Starting in October, we will have our flu vaccine clinics with drive-throughs on Friday afternoons. They'll be available for all ages, six months and older, and we'll also have the high-dose flu for anybody that's sixty-five and older. They'll all have the four strains, it's two A strains, two B strains, and it's been like that for several years, and we keep that in stock. And then, Prevnar-20 is a new vaccine that's coming out soon that we hope to be offering. One dose in adults will provide lasting protection against 20 strains of bacteria that cause pneumonia. It's indicated for use in adults sixty-five and older, adults that are nineteen and older if you have certain chronic conditions, and then infants and children aged six weeks through five years, which we do as part of our Children Vaccine Program. Any questions?
Do I need to approve?
On the, we do have to vote on the fee increase that we added to the agenda under the Human Services Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion that we approve the additional cost from, to the current fee that's been suggested, a seventy dollars.
Second. One in favor. Next, we have DSS report given by Thomas Mitchell.
Got some quick updates for you. Our current vacancy rate is twelve percent. That equates to ten vacancies. We have lots of interviews scheduled, so I think we're on the way of filling some of those. We've hired new six staff since June, and we continue to work with our staff on these quarterly emergency sheltering meetings. And then, our employee engagement that we like to keep you up to date on, June was fruit, July was National Chicken Wing Day that we celebrated, and then, we just wrapped up our cookout on September. So, there's some new folks that have just joined us. Some are, well, one is not new, is returning, I guess we should say. Brittany's returning, next one. So, Medicaid expansion, not a lot to report here. You know, we're still waiting on a state budget, so we won't get a go-live date until we get a budget. And I think the legislatures are just now coming back maybe from break, so haven't heard any budget talk as of today. The state is still estimating about three thousand expanded Medicaid cases for Alexander County, so I'll keep you informed on that. We have eleven children free to adopt. That number has come down considerably, if you've been watching it, as our adoptions have really picked up. We are continuing to do the Adoption Committee meeting every month. We currently have forty-eight children in foster care, and we have completed nineteen official adoptions in the past year, and we're going to start MAP again in the fall. And so, I wanted to spotlight child support this month. If our supervisor extraordinaire, Andrea Robinson, will come forward. So, this is the first time, most of you have probably seen Andrea, but she's been on board for, what, six, eight months?
Seven months.
Okay. Right at seven months and has done a wonderful job. And last month was Child Support Awareness Month, and they've had lots of things going on, so I wanted Andrea to get a chance to talk to you guys about what's going on in child support.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm grateful to represent child support. I also represent the North Carolina Child Support Council Executive Board. I first want to honor some colleagues of mine who, after their long workday, wanted to show up for support as we highlight the program. If they will please stand up real quick, two of our child support agents, Christine Howard and Latoya Miller. Thank you for being here. But I will, I do want to brag on our program. We currently hold a caseload total of about twelve hundred cases. What we do, in summary, we establish paternity and support, we enforce and collect support, and we also provide intergovernmental case management. We are unique in that we also serve people that are in other states, US territories, and other countries if that individual resides in the, in those areas. Our collections, we're very proud of. This last fiscal year, we collected one million, seven-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars, and sixty-nine cents for the last fiscal year. Very proud of the program. Our support incentive areas that we work very hard to achieve is overall collections, arrears collections. Overall collections have increased by ten percent. Our arrears collections have increased by over thirty percent just within the past month. Our cases under order is currently exceeding our state goal and our state average. Our paternity establishment has exceeded our state goal by six percent. Some of our notable actions that I do want to first thank are our community partners, that if it weren't for them, it would make our job much more difficult, and what we're trying to do and achieve self-sufficiency and support for our families, which would include our clerk of court, our district court, our district judges, our local sheriff department as well. Staff training and development is very important and crucial in what we do and being able to provide efficient service and effective service for the community in which we serve. We recently were able to attend the North Carolina Child Support Conference, which was in Cary, with the theme was Igniting the Flame of Engagement, which is a mantra that we want to carry out here in the community. And in doing so, with child support, August being Child Support Awareness Month, we did partner in the local community with the Back-to-School Bash with the Funeral Home. We were able to engage with, I know it was five hundred-plus community members. Our local agency was very generous in donating supplies to give out in that effort, so that was a good way to be involved and engage in the community, which we want to continue those efforts. Also, at the conference, we were afforded the opportunity to attend along with some of our colleagues and our program administrator. As you see there, that was the Back-to-School Bash event where we were giving out supplies and engaging within our community. The Child Support Conference, we engaged with our North Carolina Child Support Chief, the Child Support Commissioner, or the Federal Child Support Commissioner, as well as judicial officials and our colleagues. Serving on the board, being responsible for planning and executing that conference, it was a great success, and we do appreciate the opportunity for our staff to attend. So, in sum, our efforts, we would like to continue to engage and hopefully help the residents and the clients that we serve become more self-sufficient and maybe less reliant on some of the public assistance programs that we have in the agency. So, we appreciate your support and your time.
Any questions for Andrea? I have one question. I appreciate what you do. The arrears collection increased in one month of thirty percent. What caused that?
Well, it was a targeted effort. That was one area where we realized that we were, were not meeting. There was enormous amount of arrears that we weren't touching, so we made a targeted effort in identifying those cases, getting them on the court dockets, and, and collecting on those arrears, at least assigning a targeted amount to collect on those, those arrears, and that has attributed to our success in increasing those collections.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah, during the interview, when we were interviewing Andrea, I told her about how many child support cases we had and told her about how many, how light our docket was each week, and she was like, well, we have to do something about that. And that was one of the first things that she did when she got here was get on moving the court date, because the child support court date here was Friday. Friday's a big golf day, so judges like to get out of there early. So, she moved, she had the court date moved to Wednesdays, is that what you're on? So, now they're on Wednesdays, and the docket is much fuller, is that a good? She's working on it. She's working on getting that docket, because, you know, we need, we need these cases in front of the judges to get those payments increased. And so, that was one of the first things that she recognized and got right on it. So, she's been a great support to staff, so thank you guys for coming out, and, well, go ahead, Chad. All right, so I just wanted to give you some news. Of course, DSS partnered with NC Works as well, so every day NC Works was over there, we were at, in the room beside NC Works, and so, they actually allowed us to talk about our programs and services with the groups that they had each day, and so, that has been successful. I think right now, we're up to about fifty or sixty applications that we've taken there at the site, at CVCC across the street, and not having people necessarily have to go to the DSS office. So, we were able to set up everything over at CVCC, just like we have at the office. People can apply on their own, or we had caseworkers over there as well to help folks. And then, of course, we saw Ms. Price earlier. We did take the opportunity at DSS to celebrate her with a lot of her friends and family and food, and we had to move it outside, and it was, was kind of hot. I'll be honest with you, it was hot, but she has, she knows so many people and has been around for helping this community for so long that we had, we didn't have a space inside. So, we got tents and moved it outside, and that was a good time, so I'm glad that you guys got an opportunity to recognize Ms. Price as well, so thank you for that. I think that's our last thing, but I do have one thing that's kind of hot off the press I wanted to share with you. The details are slim right now, but I'll give you more information. I talked to Mr. Fox about this last week, but to make a long story short, Vaya is going to be investing in the foster care program in our county, and we're kind of, we're going to be a trial county for Vaya, so they chose us and Jackson County to participate in foster care reinvestment funds. And so, this will be a significant amount of money for the children in, in foster care, and it will also help us in our goal to achieve permanence, permanence for children. And so, right now, if we join and Jackson joins, there'll only be six counties in the state of North Carolina that get this money. And so, they chose us and Jackson because they feel like that we think outside the box and we're trying to always look for other options for our children, for our foster parents, and so, this will really go a long way to helping the program. So, we'll give you more information as it progresses. They're working on the contracts now to send over, and of course, we'll have more conversations about that. But I wanted to kind of give you a sneak peek at what's to come, so we're very excited and honored to be chosen, and we're looking forward to the future. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. County manager will be delivering the Senior Center report this evening.
So, Ms. Hunt, unfortunately, is out of town and unable to be here, so I will do my best to bring the same level of energy and speaking on the Senior Center as she does. We'll start with our senior activities and just a brief kind of synopsis here of several things that have happened and taken place over the last couple of months. Did want to bring up a couple of things. Bingo seems to be the most popular activity that's being held at the Activity Center. She did want me to mention that they have capped it at fifty total, and they fill up within the first day of it being posted a month in advance. So, bingo continues to be a very popular game that's being played, and overall, Christie wanted me to share with you that the increases in numbers, not only in bingo and games and activities, continue, continues to rise since COVID, that the social aspect that we're seeing has been tremendous. The new folks that are attending the Senior Center are happening weekly. She said that for the last number of weeks, there's been someone new just about every week that's attended some of the activities and the games that are being held there. Birthday lunches are always popular, that's once a month, and that fills up just as quickly. There is a cap as well placed on that. Other activities that have taken place is the Bethlehem Summer Picnic. There was a tie-dye class on July twentieth and twenty-first. There has been several things taught from a health class, diabetes navigation classes, et cetera, in the last couple of months. Moving on to the Ice Cream Social, this is a once-a-year activity. Did want to say thank you to two of the sponsors, Pace at Home out of Hickory, who paid half of the ice cream, the other half was paid for by Robin LaFon, who is the owner of Taylorsville Scoops or T-Ville Scoops. So, the ice cream was paid for, the Senior Center paid for the toppings. The Ice Cream Social was held on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. Twenty-fourth was in Bethlehem. We had a little more than thirty individuals, a ten, that's up from twenty-five last year. Taylorsville had eighty-six, that was up from seventy-five last year. So, all in all, about a hundred and fifteen individuals attended on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth for the Ice Cream Social. Coming up on the fifteenth of September this week, there is the Senior Center will host a health fair. There's over forty vendors, so she wanted me to mention that around a hundred folks plan on attending that health fair. So, that is coming up the fifteenth of September, which is later this week. Moving on, the success that we've seen on the Diamond Tour trips continues. The first trip was in August, August fourteenth through the eighteenth in Nashville. Almost forty individuals attended that trip. The second one coming up is December the fourth through the eighth to Amelia Island, St. Augustine, and Jacksonville, Florida. There's been twenty-five individuals already signed up for that trip. Several individuals have already signed up, she said, for the trips in '24, including South Dakota, the Ark, and Myrtle Beach. So, we continue to see great success in the long trips that we're taking. Moving on to the Medicaid, or Medicare and open enrollment that will take place starting October fifteenth to December seventh last year, and this is another slide that's coming up in just a few moments, we were able to save over six-hundred-thousand dollars for our seniors in the county. Western Piedmont Council of Government is sponsoring a Medicare Open Enrollment Spooktacular. This is, again, trying to mesh that social aspect with having a party, a Halloween party, and then allowing for signups to take place during that time. So, meshing the social aspect along with helping our seniors is something that I think needs great credit for, and like I said, last year, we were able to save over six-hundred-thousand dollars, which is our next slide here. We've got a couple pie charts looking at twenty-two and twenty-three. So far this year, we've been able to save two-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand, five-hundred-and-seventeen dollars with two-hundred-and-sixty individuals in the county. Last year at this time, that was a hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand. So, we're up ninety-thousand dollars in saving our seniors in the county year-to-date, and we only expect that number to increase as we go into open enrollment on October the fifteenth. Again, so, two-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand dollars year-to-date, that is up from one-sixty-four last year. Christie wanted me to mention that she believes that the addition of the two individuals within the Senior Center being certified now to help with open enrollment only will continue with those numbers hopefully, and those savings will be passed on to our seniors. Participation year-to-date is at ten-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-four total, that's in all centers. At this time last year, we're at ten-thousand-one-seventy-four, so we're up about two-hundred-and-fifty. But if you notice, in April, May timeframe last year, that was voting season, so that's a spike. We do count... We do count those numbers, so we did not have those numbers this year. So if you take out the voting irregularity that took place there in May, we're up about 1,500 overall visits in the senior centers when you look at them all together year-to-date. And that is my Senior Center update. Sorry I did not bring the same level of energy that Christie brings, so I'd be glad to answer any questions, or try to answer any questions.
I'd like to tell her that my wife went on the shopping trip with them, was on the bus, and they had an absolutely fantastic time, and my wife said to be sure to tell her, because I told her to gather reports tonight, I didn't know she wasn't going to be here, that, she said, the staff at the Senior Center, she said, you need to give them a hurrah, because they really made the trip on the, last week they went shopping and went out to dinner, and then I got to mention, we won't be back till about 6:30. So they were gone all day, but she said the ladies did a really, really good job of organization and keeping everybody happy and content.
Perfect. Thank you.
At this time, we will go into closed session per NCGS 143-318.11A456. Economic Development Contractual and Personnel, however, we do reserve the right to possibly come back in the open session to vote in regards to the school SRO resource officers.
Mr. Chairman, before we make that motion, can I say one thing? I just want to really give a shout-out. When Mitchell Gold closed, I really want to give a shout-out to our county manager, who reacted very, very quickly, along with some of the commissioners, and along with county staff. It was quick reaction, the council of government was contacted immediately and very quickly, and I just want to know that our county government reacts quickly, and sometimes not as fast as everybody would want to, but in this particular situation, by Monday morning, everything was on a roll to get everything set up to take care of our citizens. And the staff for Alexander County Government, under the leadership of our county manager, did an outstanding job, and Mr. Fox, I want to commend you and the staff for that. Thank you very much for the fast, quick reaction and getting the information out along with our public relations officer, Gary Herman. All this information was put out quickly and fast, because we got the information the same time the citizens did on Facebook, and you guys just did an outstanding job. I was so proud of you. I mean, I went to work on Monday morning bragging about you, because it was really, really good. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, Larry covered that very well, but I would just let everybody know, you know, this pops up on Facebook on Saturday, and, you know, we're receiving text messages from Mr. Fox Saturday evening about what, you know, about what needs to be done, and so I too appreciate your willingness to do the right thing on Saturday evening, and then also on Sunday, the next day, and, you know, because I think a lot of times, county manager is a pretty thankless job.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go one step further. Do have kudos to Shane, all the staff commissioners here, but also, we've got some representatives in Raleigh, Jeffrey Elmore, Eddie Settle. I've seen them in this county more than any representatives that we've had since I've been on the commission board. And if things go like it's supposed to, the school's going to get quite a bit of money for some up needed improvements, much needed there, and hopefully for the county also. But, you know, we talk about the budget in Raleigh. Gosh, for several years, we worked on many budgets. The governor didn't even have a budget, and I think they got till the second week in October to approve that, so I have all confidence in our representatives, they'll take care of us, and just wanted to thank them for being concerned about the county when Mitchell Gold did close down.
Do I have that motion?
May the move into closed session as you presented.
Second.
On favor?